Yeah. It's funny. You're going to do a big, like, take notes in this, uh... Yeah, I got... Yeah, I just shut up and... I probably should now. Yeah. Right now? Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be, um, long joint. It'll be, if we ever have a big meeting, it can be like forty hours. Only condition is you have to come off your...
For what?
The president's...
Absolutely.
I think he's gonna...
What, what, what do you expect from... I'm running a twenty-four.
Okay, I want to end with the...
I think that works.
Yeah, that works. That's perfect. That's... I already have my secretary's... So, like... Yeah, I work with it, but I'm very, in my... We're gonna... Hopefully it's gone. I think what we're gonna do is frigging surgery. And I'm saying that. I've never seen you. You were, uh, just... It's good, um, I just injured a while ago. That's all. Now, every time I hurt, I really feel bad, so... I'm just trying, I'm just gonna get it checked out, and so hopefully it's okay. I don't think I'll need surgery or anything. You might just give me a...
You all right? Tried to get you to go to dinner.
I know, I know.
It was last minute. That was perfect. Okay.
And I've never been.
All right, we will. Hey, good evening, everybody, council. Good to have you. Full house. Beautiful day, didn't start out that way, did it? That was, gosh, it was terrible. We have a very special guest tonight. Um, a young lady, all the way from Cary Ridge School. She is going to be our mayor for the evening. She won a raffle there. I don't know why you want, anybody would want to be mayor, Samantha. Will you come up and join me? Huh? Please meet Samantha Brown, is that right? There you are. So, you got out of kindergarten, is that right? Good grades?
Yes.
Yes? That is one tough school. That Mr. Hilton, I mean, he runs a tight ship over there, doesn't he?
Yes.
Yeah, he kinda does. I've had several go through there, and, uh, they're doing okay, so I think you're gonna do just great. Now, I understand you like, um, what? There's several different things. You like swimming and what else? You like golf? You do? Are you learning to play golf?
Yes.
Are you really? Where, at Bridgewater?
Yes.
Good for you. I think, yeah, you could do that really well. So I have something here I want to read for you, okay? Can I sit down right here so I can see you a little better? I have something here I want to give you, okay? And this is called a proclamation. And it says that you are our mayor for the evening. And it says, whereas Samantha Brown is a student at Cary Ridge, and you won the silent auction fundraiser, so the money went to your school, I think. That's a great thing. Therefore, I, the mayor, at least I used to be, pro-proclaim Samantha Brown as mayor for the evening of June tenth in the city of Westfield. And I have signed this and want to give it to you, and you can hand it to your parents if you wish. Mr. and Mrs. Brown are here, give that. All right. So what we'd like to do next is, will you help me do the pledge of allegiance? Okay, so let's ask everybody to stand. And we'll face the flag, and could you lead us, please? I...
I pledge, uh, the United States of America to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You did it. I'm so proud of you. Thank you. So, maybe later on, I'm gonna ask you to, you can sit here with your parents, and maybe later on, you'll come up and you can pass any kind of law you want. Is that fair? I would suggest, like, maybe five recesses next year, uh, three-hour lunch period. You be thinking about it, and when we get towards the end, you're gonna ask this council to, uh, pass a law that you want. Is that fair? Okay, I'll see you in a little while. All right. Hey, uh, we're honored to have with us, or a word of prayer, Pastor Rob Griben Trog, who has been with us several times. Rob, we so much appreciate you being here, if you would, sir.
Well, let's pray. Lord, I love you, and I honor you in this place tonight. Thank you for your hand of blessing and favor on the community of Westfield since its founding so many years ago. Lord, my desire tonight is that the, the words of our mouths, that the meditations of our hearts would be pleasing to you. And Lord, if they're not, would you help them become so over the course of this time? Lord, please provide your perfect wisdom to our current and future city leaders as they vote and consider current and new proposals coming forth this evening. Lord, would you calm the hearts of our presenters and help them to accurately share what needs to be shared and presented tonight? I honor you, I love you, and I bless you in this place tonight, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you so very much. Now Samantha, there is something very official you need to do. Uh, can you come up here just a second, please? How about, would you mind getting up on this chair? Will you stand up here on this chair, face the council, and I want you to bang this and say, "Come to order."
Come to order.
All right. Great job. President Keane.
Thank you. And to temper the audience's enthusiasm, the highlight of the meeting has already occurred, so we'll get into our, our agenda now. Clerk, please determine the quorum. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here?
Here.
Thank you very much. Uh, we do have a special presentation. I'm not sure who's introducing, uh, Mayor, you're introducing that? Uh, pardon me, former mayor, you're introducing...
Former mayor, yes, that's right. And, uh, but if Samantha will allow me to introduce, uh, our next, is that okay, Samantha? We good? All right, we have, uh, with us, um, a presentation on the Youth Climate Accord. I've talked several times with Cooper Tinsley, and he's organizing, uh, at the high school some, uh, very green initiatives. Cooper, would you like to tell us about that?
Hello. My name is Cooper Tinsley. I'm a current student at Westfield High School. I am fifteen years old and will be a sophomore in the coming year. I was recently elected sophomore class president, and I'm in the environmental club at WHS. I recently started my own organization titled the Youth Climate Accord. I started the Youth Climate Accord because I am nervous for the sake of my future. I like to think that I've been a climate activist ever since I found out about climate change, but I soon realized that until recently, I never was. Yes, I supported climate justice. I talked about it and knew some of the consequences of climate change. I, however, had no idea the trouble we would be in right now. The United Nations recently revealed that one million of the eight million plant and animal species are at risk of extinction. They also declared that if we don't achieve a carbon neutrality by 2030, the effects of climate change may become irreversible, stating that we are the last generation that can prevent irreparable damage to our planet. According to npr.org, much of this trauma is caused by shifts in seasons and the prevalence of plastics and other contaminants in the water. We are approaching a point of no return. It's time for action now. Simply, if we want to protect humanity, we must protect our biodiversity. We are currently experiencing the sixth mass extinction, losing up to two hundred species each and every year. How will climate change affect Westfield? The recent national climate assessment states that extreme heat, heavy downpours, and flooding will affect infrastructure, health, agriculture, forestry, transportation, air and water quality, and much more in the Midwest. Climate change will also exacerbate a range of risks to the Great Lakes, also disclosing that most of the region's populations live in cities, which are particularly vulnerable to climate change-related flooding and life-threatening heat waves because of aging infrastructure and other factors. Climate change may also intensify other stresses on vegetation encountered in urban environments, including increased atmospheric pollution, heat island effects, a highly variable water cycle, and frequent exposure to new pests and diseases. The Purdue Climate Change Impact Assessment says climate change will affect Indiana like nothing previously seen. It will affect our health, our forests, both our land and aquatic ecosystems, our urban green space, our agriculture, our tourism, our energy supply, our water, our infrastructure, and our economy, stating that changes to the state's climate over the coming decades, including increasing temperatures, changes in precipitation amounts and patterns, and rising levels of carbon dioxide in the air will result in several direct and indirect impacts to the state's agricultural industry. Agricultural production in Westfield would plummet, along with other cities in Indiana and throughout the world. Air and water quality will struggle to keep up with our standards. Eventually, as with all legislation, this will come down to a monetary issue. Climate change will affect your wallet like you've never seen before. Healthcare costs will go up. Food costs will go up. Severe weather damage and energy prices will skyrocket. In the long term, acting now will save billions of dollars across the U.S., eliminating most expenses due to wildfires, hurricanes, droughts, tornadoes, severe thunderstorms, hail, and blizzards. Cities all across Indiana are listening to their youth and passing resolutions to get things done. Carmel, Lawrence, Indianapolis, South Bend, Goshen, and Bloomington are among the top contributors to climate justice in Indiana. Don't let our city fall behind. I met with Mayor Cook about a month ago and again this past week to discuss the various ways Westfield can be green. Many of the great opportunities that have occurred are in part because of the mayor, and for that, I thank him. But there is still much to be done to secure our future. The youth of Westfield and the world are fearful, scared, and nervous for the fate of their future. Help us. I have not come here today to tell you what you are doing wrong or to criticize you or any other politicians. I'm here on behalf of youth across Westfield and the world to ask simply for your help. The UK Student Climate Network voices that decisions are made by much older people. Leaders across the world are mostly over fifty years. They have less skin in the game. Less of their time on Earth will be affected. Young people now need to take charge of their future in a way that the previous generation has failed to do. Adults must facilitate the demands of the young to not be left with a polluted and unsafe planet. We are here in front of you today for one reason and one reason only, to help this small city of forty thousand people make a tremendous difference and secure the future of generations to come. Help us make a resolution that will not only secure our future, but that of our children and your grandchildren. All we need is one city council member who we can lean on to help us draft this piece of life-changing legislation. Someone that we can learn from. Someone willing to teach us everything they know, because we are willing to listen. But ultimately, someone we can thank later for saving us. We aren't just trying to get attention. No. We are much more than that. We are striving for attention and change. We want to see our city grow and prosper, and we believe the best way to do that is through green methods. Not only will the implementation of these green methods make Westfield a more attractive place to live, but will also be the catalyst for Westfield to develop economically whilst being green and sustainable. We are running out of time quickly. It is time to take action now. So I'm asking you, as youth, as families, as friends, and as politicians, listen, observe, and most importantly, change. Thank you. Real quick, I would like to ask everyone that is here in support of climate justice in Indiana to please stand. Thank you.
Captain, do you have any questions? Or Cooper?
Any questions or comments?
I guess I have some. What is your goal with the legislation? I mean, what, what specific kind of endeavors, kind of standards are you looking at changing?
So, we're thinking, um, obviously about doing a resolution, which is only a promise, but we want that promise to go further, and we want that promise to be, to promise ordinances in the future. Um, we're not exactly sure, which is why we're asking to learn from you guys and for you guys to teach us, um, what's possible and, um, what we can really do to be the most effective, um, in the time constraints that we have.
I know that you've been working with Westfield Green together, and...
Yeah.
That's great, because Westfield Green together works with both the council and the mayor on all these things, so work on that. Thanks, Cooper.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be meeting with, uh... Cooper, some more. Um, he represents some very bright, concerned kids, uh, young adults at the, at the high school level, and, uh, will, uh... In our discussions, our first discussions were about a lot of the things that this council has done through the years, our recycling, our U.S. thirty-one, uh, natural vegetation plan, uh, the rain gardens that we have and the stormwater drainage. So, uh, yeah, he's, he's, he's up to speed on a lot of the different things we've done, but we'll continue to meet and, uh, and see where this might take us. Thank you, Cooper.
Thank you.
Okay, on, moving on to old business, ordinance nineteen dash eleven, the Chatham Hill PUD amendment four. Caleb, I believe you're up for that?
Excuse me, we didn't do...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we need to...
Hold up, I forgot about minutes and... Getting ahead of myself. Approval of minutes. Uh, you've had the minutes, uh, I would ask for a motion for approval of minutes.
So moved.
Move by Jim Aig?
Second.
Second by Robert Harkey. All in favor, please, well, let's, shall, have, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All none opposed with that? That's unanimous. Moving on to the claims. Need a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Jim Aig, need a second?
Second.
Second Cindy Spoljerick. All in favor of approving claims, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All are in favor, that passage unanimously also. Now, on to old business, nineteen dash eleven, Caleb.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, Caleb Ernest with Economic and Community Development Department. This item is an amendment to the Chatham Hills Planned Unit Development District. The area in the amendment is approximately one hundred and fifty-three acres and is currently zoned AGSF one agriculture, single-family rural district. The area is located east and adjacent to Horton Road and south and adjacent to one hundred and ninety-ninth Street. This item received a public hearing at the May eighth Plan Commission meeting and received a, received a unanimous favorable recommendation on the May twentieth Plan Commission meeting. The proposal is eligible for adoption tonight. John Davoshaewitz of Nelson and Frankenberger is here and does not plan on making a presentation, is available for questions, as am I, should you have any for staff. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion on ordinance nineteen dash eleven? Cindy Spoljerick moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Robert Harkey. Discussion. Questions, comments?
There were, um, a few changes as this went through the process at APC, working with neighbors to resolve some of their issues, but I think it's in good shape now and ready for adoption.
Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chip Aig?
Yes.
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 Yes. Austrian Pine, PUD, ordinance nineteen dash twelve. Dane?
Good evening, council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening is the proposed PUD, known as the Austrian Pine PUD, which will be located at the southeast corner of State Road thirty-two and Austrian Pine Way just west of the post office. Since its April eighth introduction, the petitioner has added an illustrative layout, additional character exhibits, language to the PUD requiring a minimum four hundred square foot pocket park, and has excluded heliports and special exception uses from the permitted uses. This item received a public hearing at the May eighth Plan Commission meeting, a unanimous favorable recommendation at the May twentieth Plan Commission meeting, and is available for your adoption consideration this evening. John Davoshaewitz of Nelson and Frankenberger is present this evening. He does not plan to make a presentation, but is available for questions, and I'm available if there are questions of staff. Thank you.
May I have a motion on ordinance nineteen dash twelve?
Move that we approve ordinance nineteen twelve, the Austrian Pine PUD.
Robert Harkey.
Second.
Second by Steve Hoover. Questions, discussion, comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Okay, moving on, ordinance nineteen dash fourteen, Westfield High School Campus, PUD District. Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you this evening for consideration is a proposed new planned unit development for the existing Westfield High School campus. This item comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Advisory Plan Commission. However, since that recommendation, the schools have expressed a desire to modify the electronic wall sign standards as they would apply to the electronic wall signs located on the west side of the football stadium. Dr. Joe Malone with Westfield Washington Schools is here this evening to discuss this matter with you. And with that, I'd like to call, uh, Mr. Dr. Malone up to the podium, and we'll be available to answer any questions that you have for staff following his comments. Thank you.
Mayor Cutt, Mayor Brown, city council members, uh, really appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to come speak before you tonight. Uh, my request is, uh, to see if it would be possible to get some flexibility in regards to our signage and image transfer. Uh, currently, right now, uh, city standards are once per hour. Currently, the last four or five years, we've been working under a five-second rule. And, uh, to this point, we've not received any, uh, negative comments in regard to our signage on the back of the football stadium. Uh, this came, uh, in regards to after we had signage in front of the central office on thirty-two downtown where we had a, a list, uh, board, and we would announce, uh, our vendors that support our capital project funds, our athletic, uh, department funds, and our athletic field funds. Uh, so being able to have our sponsorship on this sign is truly imperative, uh, to the mission at Westfield Schools. What we're requesting is to have, uh, the sign images rotate every fifteen to twenty seconds uh, instead of the five seconds that we have now, uh, in the one hour that we would have. So that would be our request. Uh, we are not, uh, in regards to this rezoning, looking to put any more, uh, electric signs up that have images that rotate. This would be the only one. Uh, I believe in past practices, we've actually worked with, uh, the city in, um, I'm trying to think of the, or, to say, open doors, uh, and we've had images up there uh, in regards to them in support of open doors, and I think there may be, uh, a request that's in the works uh, in regards to the mini camp with the Colts that we would be happy to display for the city of Westfield. Uh, so, uh, we would really appreciate your support, uh, in this flexibility. Do you have any questions that I could...
I'm gonna ask one question, 'cause I thought of this after we had our discussion and you were asking questions.
Yes, sir.
Originally, the signage provided sponsorships, which went to help pay for the stadium, because the stadium opened debt-free. There was no taxpayer money used, it's paid off completely. And the ongoing revenue was used to maintain the fields so that no taxpayer money would be used in maintenance also.
That is correct.
Is that also still correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then, any nonprofit organization in the community may ask for signage use without cost?
We would definitely look into that, without question. And, uh, to reiterate, the... We have sponsorship on the front of the football stadium, which would be on the east side and the entrance areas. But the folks that have sponsorship with Westfield Schools really request that they have an opportunity to put their name on the back of the sign, and that's what really helps drive, uh, the funds, uh, to put back into our stadium to where we're not using taxpayer dollars to take care of that.
Questions, comments? And I'll certainly allow a legal counsel to have any comment that he may wish to have on this matter, 'cause I don't know all the ramifications of the request.
I believe if, to consider this, this would have to go back to APC. I mean, is this something we can amend?
I believe since it's a zoning amendment, he's asking for a change in it, so the council has the authority to amend this amendment, amend this amendment as it's before you and send it back down to the Plan Commission. Plan Commission has forty-five days in which to reject it, accept it, or do nothing. If they do, uh, reject it, it comes back to you for another vote. One vote and it's adopted. If they accept it or do nothing within the forty-five days, it's accepted in the manner in which you've sent it down. So you can make an amendment and send it to the Plan Commission.
Since, um, ordinance nineteen fourteen is fairly well intact with this exception, I would suggest, since the sign has public benefit for our community, um, in helping out the schools, I would suggest we set the, uh, electronic image transfer to fifteen seconds would be my recommendation. And that would be the only change to moving forward with this ordinance.
Is the timeline, Joe, is the timeline okay, that it will go back and probably either be in July, the August meeting would come back before us?
If that's what's needed, Dr. Keane, absolutely.
So you're, are you making a motion to amend this?
I would... Dr. Keane?
Sorry.
It would not come back here if the Plan Commission accepted it or did nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
But it would not take effect unless the Plan Commission took some action and said they approved our amendment at their next meeting. It would take forty-five days before it would automatically be accepted?
Yes.
Okay. So they could do it as soon as next Monday, potentially.
And it would be a public hearing, but it wouldn't have to be noticed?
I don't believe there's a public hearing. It would be held in a public meeting, but...
Just an administrative...
Yes.
Just an administrative function?
Yes.
So I would recommend we send this back to the APC with the 15-second image rotation.
So is the proper, is the proper motion to approve the ordinance with the recommendation of the modification to 15 seconds?
To amend the ordinance and send it back to the Plan Commission for consideration.
All right. So I would, I would make that motion, yes.
Is there a second to that?
Yes.
Second by Robert Harkay. Discussion, comments, questions?
Well, we, I was part of the group who established our current guidelines, and what, clearly what we were trying to avoid were flashing signs or signs that changed frequently enough that it became very noticeable. For anyone else, I would not consider even the 15-second change. I guess, in my, in my opinion, this makes sense as a partner with the schools and cooperate, a benefit, I think, to the taxpayers in that we're able to collect some money from this and relieve some of that tax burden that might otherwise be there. I think the 15 seconds is a reasonable compromise in that it is not flashing frequently. Someone driving by on 31 at most would see two messages. I think it's a reasonable compromise, and like I say, I would only consider this because it's our school system and because of the support that provides to our nonprofits and potentially the city for some type of advertising as well. That's my, my comments.
Other comments, questions?
I do have a question. So, Joe, you're using this for revenue generating purposes, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, just an explanation, Dr. King, you mentioned that there were no taxpayer funds used to build this facility?
Correct.
Okay, but I'd like to note that the city did make a donation.
You absolutely are correct.
Those are tax dollars.
Which you were recouping from the pilot of Riverview Hospital.
Our tax dollars went to pay that.
We could now have moved off the field had that not occurred.
I just want to make it clear that those are tax dollars, several million dollars worth.
Somebody smarter than I handed me this, so this is the actual motion we will be voting The motion is to approve ordinance 19-14, Westfield High School Campus PUD District with the following condition, that section 9, 9.2B of ordinance 19-14 be modified to state that the electronic wall signs located on the west elevation of the football stadium as shown in Exhibit D of ordinance 19-14 be allowed to change images every 15 seconds, and that all other standards of Article 6.17, parent F, parent 6, electronic signs of the UDO that are not otherwise modified by ordinance 19-14 apply these electronic wall signs. Everyone understand that? And I know that's what you all said.
Much more detailed than the original motion, but I think it accomplishes the same thing.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
I think you need a second.
Oh, no.
Bob's second, okay, very good.
So that, that amends the motion to be entered into the record, is that correct?
That is actually the motion that's being put in that Jim sort of did.
Thank you.
I will leave that to the office now. Is this, are you approving this time?
Yes. Hopefully, we don't know, we're voting on it in a minute here.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Kevin, you're back up. Westfield Center PUD District, ordinance 19-15.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, again, for the record, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. This item before you this evening for adoption consideration is another new planned unit of development district. This one's for an existing commercial center, commonly referred to today as Creekside Center, but is being rebranded as the Westfield Center, located on the south side of State Road 32, just west of Cary Road. Purpose of this PUD is to get the proper standards in place so the center can be platted. There will be no new construction or development being proposed for the center at this time. This item does come to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Advisory Plan Commission and is ready for adoption consideration this evening. The petitioner's representative is here this evening. She does not plan to make a presentation, but is available if you have any questions for her. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on ordinance 19-15?
Move to approve ordinance 19-15, Westfield Center PUD.
Motion to approve by Steve Hoover. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Ake. Questions, comments?
Just to be clear, the trail section and connecting with the midland, that's going to happen now with this plat?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, it's outlined there.
Do we have a timeframe for that or no?
No.
There would not, this is just simply like a procedural change, so there's not going to be a lot of, so they could start that. I mean, it's not like they have to do something else first or anything. It's just a matter of when they pull the trigger on the trail.
Correct. Yeah, that can happen anytime.
Can you talk to them, make sure it happens sooner rather than later?
Sir, we've been working on that one for a little while, so it's on the radar for sure.
I have to sign the plat, so we'll make sure that that happens.
Okay. Any other questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Ordinance 19-18, Wheeler Landing, N. O'Brien.
Jim Crawford is making his way to the microphone. I think it's in final approval form. It's been going back and forth over a period of several months, and we are in agreement with the terms therein as far as the mechanics and particulars. Jim can speak to that.
Normally, I ask for a motion, but I won't on this because I want to hear the clarification and everything prior to, so...
Okay. As we discussed when this ordinance was introduced, Wheeler Landing One LLC, which is developing the Wheeler Landings area, is going to put in all of the infrastructure that's necessary, the intersection of improvements, the extensions of the roads that were discussed and are set forth in the ordinance. By doing this, then, they will be reimbursed by the city for those in an amount up to $7.2 million payable solely from road impact fees associated with that development and TIF increment associated with that development. And that TIF increment is net of any costs that the city has in carrying out its duties with respect to that TIF increment district. So the burden's on the developer to get the improvements up out of the ground, get the AV so that it can get paid back. There are no advance taxes being used for the development.
So the risk is totally on the part, on the backs of the developers?
Correct.
And it really is to their benefit to develop that more quickly?
As quickly as possible.
So, which benefits us, but there's no risk to the city through this?
Correct. Yeah, the infrastructure improvements are something that would be necessary going forward for the city to grow in that area, but it's immediately necessary for them to have a successful project there, so they're going to front those costs.
Then I will ask for a motion for ordinance 19-18.
Move to approve.
Motion to...
Ordinance 19-18.
Chuck Lehman moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Hoover. Ask for other questions or comments at this point in time. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
New business. Amanda.
Good evening, President. Members of the council, for the record, my name is Amanda Rubidoo with the Economic Development Department. Browning Chapman has filed a real property tax abatement request for the construction of approximately $4 million office and warehouse building, which will be located at 2101 Bastion Court, just east of Bastion Solutions, pardon me, just, yes, just east of Bastion Solutions in the North Point Development on approximately six acres. Property is currently zoned North Point PUD and would accommodate the proposed use. Representing the petitioner, Ben World with Maguire Sponsor, and Larry Sigler with Peterson Construction will be providing additional information on the proposed project at the conclusion of my summary. The request is for a seven-year real property abatement, which will be phased in at 10% per year over the life of the abatement. Prior to council's consideration of a tax abatement request, an economic revitalization area must be first established in accordance with Indiana statute. Should council adopt the resolution in front of you tonight, the request would be back in front of you for your July 8th council meeting in the form of a confirmatory resolution, followed by consideration for the actual real property abatement itself. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I will turn it over to Ben for his presentation.
Any questions for Amanda before the developer comes up?
Good evening, council members. Ben World with Maguire Sponsor. We're a consulting firm that's working with the end-user client, Alan, Browning Chapman, as well as Mr. Larry Sigler, the developer for this project. As you can see here, what we're considering is a 67,000-square-foot facility that would be going in. We have one of the end-user tenants here tonight that could potentially be occupying this building. That end-user tenant would potentially be bringing 90 net new jobs to the city of Westfield and would be occupying that building, potentially be able to expand further into it or have another tenant that could also go into it as well. We will have Mr. Larry Sigler talk about, represent the developer here tonight, and talk about the building a little bit more.
Yeah, Larry Sigler with precedent or with Peterson Company. Yeah, what you see here is a 67,000-square-foot building that we plan to build, and like Ben said, it will be made for expansion for our tenant, Browning Chapman. Ben's going to talk a little bit more about maybe some of the, some of the figures and whatnot, but I do want to talk about kind of the market and kind of what I see. And actually, I want to correct Amanda, we are actually asking for a 10-year abatement. I think the mayor's office has talked about a five or seven, and we've had some very, you know, good conversations with them, but respectfully, we are here to ask for a 10. And I'm here to ask for a 10 and kind of talk about why we think that's a reasonable request. My company, we do a lot of construction around the city, around the central Indiana, and just my company alone, we've built eight buildings in Whitestown, and they've all had 10-year tax abatement. We've built six buildings in Greenwood that had 10-year tax abatement, and we've built eight buildings in Mount Comfort that have all had tax abatement. And in fact, in the last couple of months, even Zinesville approved two buildings for a 10-year tax abatement, so that's kind of a big stretch for them. But when we get to abatements, I usually put them in two categories. One would be kind of like what this council has approved for the Westfield Business Center. So at the Westfield Business Center, we had a 10-year abatement on a speculative building. And in that building, we have three tenants that are now in the building and a fourth that I wish I could announce tonight, but I'm excited to announce them, but I can't quite announce it yet, but it's a full building. And in all four instances, those tenants asked, "Do you have a 10-year tax abatement?" It was on the RFP, and we had to respond, you know, what kind of abatement we had. So in the competition world, that was important. The other kind of abatement, other category, is kind of like what this council also did on a 10-year abatement for Bastion, for Toyota Bastion. So they got a 10-year abatement right next door. Now, a couple of figures here. Bastion had 50 employees with about $2.3 million of wages. Browning Chapman will have 90 employees with over $6 million of wages. So I guess I would argue, and that's why we think our request is reasonable, if you're going to give a 10-year tax abatement and you gave it for 50 at $2.3 million of wages to have, you know, 90 employees coming to Westfield at $6 million of wages, that's a solid project, and that's kind of some, something that you kind of want to have. I have here Alan Browning from Browning Chapman, and I'd like for you guys, I'd like for him to kind of explain what he does, and like for him to, you guys can look him in the eye and ask him kind of any questions you want, because after all, we, the developer, we don't get the tax abatement. We get it, but we pass it all on to the tenant. So we would commit that if we get the 10-year tax abatement, all of it would be passed on to the tenant. So with that, I'd like to introduce Alan.
Yes, my name's Alan Browning with Browning Chapman LLC, and this is my business partner, Gordon Chapman. We're the owners, so we will be the beneficiaries of the tax abatement. Gordon and I began, well, I'll explain about the company first. We're specialty contractors. We have a focus in four key areas, parking garage restoration and maintenance work. So think about Circle Center Mall, Keystone Mall, we do a lot of work for casinos. We do a lot of university work. We're at Purdue University, IUPUI, Methodist Hospital, those kinds of places. Those projects generally involve engineered drawings, epoxy injection work, new coatings. They're substantial projects, the parking garage world is. We also do concrete floor polish and a lot of it, so think of Starbucks and Aldi's and Restoration Hardwares and Goodwill. We actually did the Starbucks right up the road on 32 recently, the concrete floor polish there, and as you guys probably know, that's a popular thing. We do joint sealants in a lot of those precast buildings, both interior and exterior. We're at the State House right now, doing a major joint sealant job there, Newcastle Correctional Facility. And then we do decorative coatings and epoxy coatings, so think of industrial kitchens and locker rooms, cafeterias in schools, and those kinds of things. So our client base is Cummins. We do a lot of work at Cummins and Huntington Bank, Aldi's, Lowe's, Amazon, Duke Realty, Peterson Group. So we've got a great customer base that we do a lot of work with, and we're proud of that. Gordon and I got in business, we met each other in 2012, both central Indiana guys, lifelong central Indiana guys, both been in construction business our whole life. I came from the general contracting side, so mostly on the institutional side for years, and Gordon's been on the specialty side. We met in 2012 and decided to form a business, and we've been chasing his line of work, but my, my experience on the general contracting side has been, has been a positive for sure. So we started in 2012, coming out of the recession, and a little bit nervous about it, not sure about the opportunities ahead, and we started with the two of us in an office in Anderson, Indiana, and we've grown today to actually, we've got over 110 employees and probably going to 125 or more here in the next little bit. So we're doing okay, and we're proud of that, and we've outgrown our space. We moved from Anderson to Fishers in 2013, and we've outgrown our space there. We've actually, we leased a second spot and then a third spot, and then we've got some garage space. So we've, we've outgrown it big time, and we're looking for a place to relocate. And as we're thinking about that, we want to have a place where our employees are proud to come to work. We want to be in a growing community, a vibrant community, where people want to work for us, and they have good lunch options, good lunch options, and amenities, so things like the Monon Trail and being able to exercise maybe during the workday, and, you know, golf course at Chatham Hills is kind of... So our client base is Cummins. We do a lot of work at Cummins and Huntington Bank, Aldi's, Lowe's, Amazon, Duke Realty, Peterson Group. So we've got a great customer base that we do a lot of work with and we're proud of that. Gordon and I got in business, we met each other in 2012. Both central Indiana guys, lifelong central Indiana guys, both been in construction business our whole life. I came from the general contracting side, so mostly on the institutional side for years, and Gordon's been on the specialty side. We met in 2012 and decided to form a business and we've been chasing his line of work, but my, my experience on the general contracting side has been, has been a positive for sure. So we started in 2012, coming out of the recession and a little bit nervous about it, not sure about the opportunities ahead, and we started with the two of us in an office in Anderson, Indiana. And we've grown today to actually, we've got over a hundred and ten employees and probably going to a hundred and twenty-five or more here in the next little bit. So we're doing okay and we're proud of that and we've outgrown our space. We moved from Anderson to Fishers in 2013 and we've outgrown our space there. We've actually leased a second spot and then a third spot and then we've got some garage space. So we've, we've outgrown it big time and we're looking for a place to relocate. And as we're thinking about that, we want to have a place where our employees are proud to come to work. We want to be in a growing community, a vibrant community where people want to work for us and they have good lunch options, good lunch options and amenities. So things like the Monon Trail and being able to exercise maybe during the workday and, you know, golf course at Chatham Hills is kind of attractive to some of the guys. So those kinds of things are attractive to us. Westfield fits the bill for sure in that way and I think the thirty-one, the renovations of thirty-one make a huge difference where maybe we wouldn't be thinking about this five or 10 years ago. We are today. The access to four-sixty-five and other communities that we work is a big benefit to us, so we'd be excited to join your community and we think as we looked at other communities around, we really like Westfield. It's our, it's our first choice and we'd love to be a part of what's going on over here.
Anything?
No, thanks.
Okay. So I'll be glad to answer any questions or- Okay, I'm going to just start off by making a comment and then we can go from wherever. I have a little concern that I'm sitting here with numbers that indicate a seven-year tax abatement and you're requesting a ten-year tax abatement and I don't have the numbers to justify that and I'm not a, I'm the former school superintendent, so I'm not a big person on tax abatements, but as was mentioned, every community around here uses them and so we've got to compete in the world and so I've swallowed hard and am willing to go along. But I'm, I'm a little hesitant to go along without the administration having crunched the numbers, given me the numbers and given support to move forward with a ten-year abatement, so I'm a, I'm a little bit of a, I prefer to put this item off until our administration has had a chance to study it and given us a recommendation on a ten-year TIF. I don't know how everybody else feels.
I mean, if we, I mean, we could establish the revitalization area, that doesn't give anything. That just makes it eligible. Is that correct?
And that's all that's in front of you here tonight. It's just the establishment of the ERA, so that simply opens up the toolbox for other tools to be considered.
Can I ask another question? Something I just want clarification on and it's something that troubles me with a spec building and that this would be tied to this building, not a specific user. And so inasmuch, it could potentially wind up being, for instance, all storage and not have any jobs, correct? I mean, that could happen with the zoning and how everything's structured.
The spec, the abatement will run with, with the property. That is true, but we have a, we'll have a ten-year lease with Browning Chapman. So Browning Chapman will be the tenant in that building for those ten years.
You got to understand, from my perspective, if they weren't or if they moved out, you know, tomorrow, you still have an abatement on there and could potentially have zero jobs, so then-
Correct. That would then give us though the ammunition and to be able to be competitive with the other communities that I talked about that are also giving it. So in order to have that ammunition to be competitive, I would be a lot better off to get new tenants. In fact, a case study is right down the road on Oak Ridge Road where we had an abatement on a speculative building and we were able to fully lease that building within six months after completion because we had the abatement. So I think there was a misunderstanding on the seven-year versus the ten-year. I think the numbers that were run were based on what the city kind of was, was kind of offering on the seven years and that's kind of the numbers that you have. I think from day one, we were always hoping to get ten. We're not here to be controversial and to draw a line in the sand, but I think, you know, there was a good argument for us to be ten, but the numbers that you do have, I believe from the city, are seven and I, you know, freely, freely admit that.
What's the estimated value of the building? Is that the four million dollars?
Yes.
The structure? Is there any, is there any harm in passing this economic revitalization area? Is that something we can rescind if, if, if we did not decide to pass the tax abatement?
This is, I'm sorry, this is the very first step in the process, so this is just the declaratory resolution. It's, it's just a resolution, resolution saying you're considering the, it as a economic revitalization area. The next meeting, it could be confirmed, but otherwise it, it just sits there.
So by doing, by taking action tonight, we just save-
It's something you're-
A meeting a month, maybe two weeks, whatever, for the developer.
Okay, other questions or comments?
I, I have one, or just general. I've listened to them, short of getting into a long-winded presentation, I'm in favor of the ten, ten years as they were requested, so I'll leave it at that. I'll be glad to discuss that in the next coming days, but to be competitive, to welcome them here, I'm in favor of it. So I believe we should move ahead tonight, whatever that is. We also have the opportunity to rescind the abatement on an annual basis. We just went through that, if you recall. So if they don't meet their goals, we have an opportunity to make those adjustments.
And we did rescind one last month.
Yeah, I think all we are asking for tonight is the, setting up the ERA. That's all that was on the agenda really to be done, but we did want to kind of let you know who was behind. We didn't want you to blindly set up an ERA without kind of hearing from, from the tenant and then kind of what we're, what our, you know, ultimate goal is here, so.
How many square feet would you use?
Around forty-five thousand square feet.
And ninety jobs would be created just in the area that they would be leasing.
Day one, correct? Yeah, so they'll have over a hundred. Because you have the opportunity to rescind, they went in to be conservative and said, "We're going to set the floor at ninety jobs," even though day one they'll have over a hundred.
Are these, are these people that are currently in Fishers that you're moving over here?
As far as residing in Fishers or-
Your workforce that's coming there. Your workforce coming?
Yeah, they're central Indiana all over. Some live in Fishers, some live in Westfield. My son and daughter are both workforce and they live in Westfield, so. Like most places, they come from all over, but they're central Indiana.
So the jobs are not new to your company, they're new to Westfield. I think you put on a good presentation. This sounds exciting, but like President Keen, it would have been helpful to have had organized and consistent documentation in front of us, but understanding this is step one. I agree with Chuck, there's no probably reason to not make the progress if that's going to be beneficial to the overall timeline to getting this completed.
Yeah, we'd ask for the, do the ERA and then we'd be back and that's when you can hone in on seven versus ten.
Okay, let me, let me ask a question. You started your company in 2012.
That's correct.
In Fishers.
Excuse me, actually, we started in Anderson. That's where I was employed at the time. We were there for about eight months and moved to Fishers.
Moved Fishers. Did you receive a tax abatement from Fishers when you moved there?
Apparently, at least space said, "No, we did not."
Okay.
But we also started there with my four years.
I will entertain a motion on Resolution nineteen dash one oh nine.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Steve Hoover.
Second.
Second by Chuck Lehman. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. I will vote yes, since it's just this area or establishing this.
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Moving on, more new business. All these are introductions, I believe. Ordinance nineteen nineteen, Oak Manor PUD Amendment. Dane.
Evening, Council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic Community Development Department. Before you this evening is the introduction of an amendment to the Oak Manor North PUD specific to a three-acre parcel north of Gunther Boulevard adjacent to the Grassy Branch Marketplace PUD to permit an Options Charter School on the real estate. The petitioners also agreed to repeal and replace the entirety of the Oak Manor North PUD as applicable to the real estate and default to the UDO going forward with general business as the real estate's underlying zoning district. There will be a neighborhood meeting for this item. Details not currently available and this item is scheduled for a public hearing at the July first Plan Commission Meeting. Dave Coots of Coots, Hinky and Wheeler is present this evening to give a brief presentation on behalf of the petitioner, but first Chief of Staff Todd Bertrand would like to provide some additional information about this proposal as the proposed school is located in an economic development overlay as established by the UDO. As such, this area has special requirements regarding tax exempt uses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. The item before you tonight, councilors, is a, is one iteration of a payment law of taxes that was negotiated with the administration and your petitioner that you'll hear this evening. Recognizing that this particular land use is in a, an economic development area and recognizing the local ordinance that you passed that prohibited such. Balancing the spirit of that ordinance and the service that Options Charter School would provide, we did negotiate a payment law of taxes at approximately eighteen thousand dollars a year in perpetuity. The calculus we used for that is based on the, the city tax rate. Rather than index it up or down, we negotiated a flat rate so we didn't have to really go back and recalculate year over year and create administrative management problems. So both parties felt comfortable with that flat rate in perpetuity and it, we wanted to have that particular instrument in place prior to the request that's before you tonight. So any questions you may have for me relative to the payment law of taxes?
Any questions for Deputy Mayor?
The only question I would have, if they had a future expansion, would that modify the agreement?
I defer to our legal counsel, Mr. Zeigler. The question is, if they have a further expansion, how does the payment apply to that?
When the expansion, if there is an expansion, it would have to go to the Development Department, be reassessed, impact fees. This will be caught on that same examination and we can revisit.
And it runs with the user, not the property? So this is GB and if options move out and we have a different enterprise move in, they would receive the same agreement?
I'm sorry, I thought you meant if the owner changed. No, the use. It would be on the use. So if the building were to be sold and it'd be a tax-paying entity, it would go away, of course. The payment law would go away. If another tax exempt use tried to move in or wanted to move in, they would be subject to the same examination that charter was in this one. It would be a non-permitted use in that area, absent a new or a renewed payment law of taxes acceptable to the city at the time.
So as long as, if the use stayed the same, even though it might have a different name, as long as the use was the same, that could pass to a new user, but it could not pass to a new use.
Yes, a tax exempt use.
If it, if it, Councilor, correct me if I'm wrong, both councilors with an E, if options ownership changed to a different five oh one C three, this would be transferable to that particular, you know, use entity. I think once you hear Mr. Coots's description of what options, who they are, the service they provide, it certainly is in addition to this community and, and our educational offerings. Any questions related to the economics of this particular matter? With that, I yield.
Thank you, members of council. For your records, my name is Dave Coots. My office address is two fifty-five East Carmel Drive in Carmel. Options Charter Schools is a publicly funded educational entity founded in two thousand and ten with offices initially, or school initially in Noblesville and then a second school that they organized in Carmel. And this proposal, although the, the building itself is not before you this evening, but rather the use amendment to the PUD to permit a, a junior high school, middle school, high school use in the Oak Manor PUD use schedule. And as you know, from the Oak Manor PUD that you adopted several years ago, there are a number of educational related uses within that PUD, but none of them are, are fit within the actions. Sixth grade through twelfth grade schooling for generally at-risk students, students who have been expelled, students who have been bullied, students who have a reason that they are no longer suitable in the public school system, if you will. It is anticipated that this school will educate a hundred and fifty students in a fifteen thousand square foot facility when built. And like I say, the matter before you this evening is the introduction of the amendment to the ordinance. We, of course, will have to go back through Plan Commission for development plan approval and the design of the building itself once we get this hurdle established. Options will acquire this real estate. It's a three-acre site. They will acquire this real estate, own the facility, and as long as they own it and operate it, we're under the pilot. If we sell it or no longer operate it as represented to you all, then it becomes a fully taxable property. So we would ask that you send us off to Plan Commission for their review of the amendment to the PUD and then we'll be back to, before you, assuming we're successful there. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
You have locations in Noblesville. Do you have one in Carmel as well?
Correct.
And about, how many students do you graduate? Are they all about the same size?
They are. Carmel varies from seventy to ninety. Same with Noblesville. Noblesville has sixth grade through twelve. Carmel only has nine or ten through twelve, or nine through twelve.
I've heard great things about them. And we do have community members here that are on the board for this, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Who's the authorizer? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
No, thank you.
Who's your authorizer?
Allstate.
Allstate.
University.
Just for the rest of the council's clarification, edification, I guess, this is one of the probably nice niche opportunities that charter schools do provide a really good service because they, they deal with children that the public school, regular public schools don't deal with because of being expelled or dropping out or whatever, and it's been quite a success story. I think the number of students that graduate based upon the challenges that they have is truly a success story, so it's, it's a good operation and would provide a service to children here.
I personally feel it would be a great addition to our community and fill the gap that's necessary, so I think we should pass it on. It's my feeling.
Any other comments or questions?
Any more procedural kind of questions? Usually we have some kind of concept and we have a little bit more information moving forward and you even have details about, you want certain sign standard, you know, emissions and things like that, but yet we don't even have an elevation. I'm a bit curious why we're using a GB underlying on this. Is there a reason?
The reason we have not submitted elevations, engineered plans for the site for drainage purposes, we have not negotiated the road impact fee is because the school has decided that they want to be conservative with the dollars they're spending to, to see that they get the use approved first before then contracting to go forward. Since, since we got the- get the use approved first before then contracting to go forward. Since, since we got the public hearing date set for July 1 at Plan Commission, and we have our neighborhood community meeting June 25 at the library, we, we have gone ahead and engaged a surveyor and engineer to begin that process, but we haven't completed that to submit anything to you or to the Plan Commission. But we will have renderings for the Plan Commission meeting on the 1st of July.
And just, just to address where I think you're going, this, this defaults to the UDO and the 32 overlay zone as the PUD is constructed. So, I mean, it takes a lot of the guesswork. We're used to seeing those standards, and that's, that's typical. A lot of the detailed development plans that come through here, that's what they do. They default to the underlying zoning. They're just-
Sure, but with the way it defaults to GB and then just adds this on as a permitted use, I'd prefer to see it exclude everything else and just have this at that point.
I got you.
See what I'm saying?
Yep.
It, it allows too many things if this doesn't happen. No offense, but if Options walks away tomorrow, we're left with that.
And I think it, this, as contemplated under the Oak Manor PUD today, it's pretty much a general business district. I, I can confirm that, but it wouldn't surprise me at all because that's how that whole area, north and, and south, it was designed to, to mirror what's on the south side of the street. But your comments are noted, I'm sure we'll be, we can talk about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move this on to APC.
Thank you.
Dean, you're back up. Grand Park Fieldhouse PUD Amendment 19-20.
Evening, Council. For the record, Dean Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department again. Before you this evening is the introduction of a proposed amendment to the Grand Park Fieldhouse PUD which permit, would permit an approximately 19-foot-tall nitrogen tank to be placed on the front facade of the Grand Park Fieldhouse for the recovery room's cryotherapy needs. The nitrogen tank, defined as ground-mounted mechanical equipment within the proposed amendment, is required by the UDO to be completely screened from all ground-level viewpoints with a masonry wall, solid evergreen screen or a combination of these two, which may prove difficult due to its size. Additionally, the proposed PUD amendment would address any issues that the addition of a nitrogen tank may render in regards to compliance with the elevation exhibit on the existing Grand Park Fieldhouse PUD. This item is scheduled for a public hearing at the June 17 Plan Commission Meeting. Connie Komarovski of the Recovery Room is present this evening to give a brief presentation. Thank you.
All right, folks. I know we have a little bit of a unique situation, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and I'm sure you haven't seen anything like this before you in maybe quite some time. And I understand that the, the initial concern that the council had was a cosmetic concern, and I just wanted to reassure you that it's been a, an ongoing thing since the very beginning, since we started lease negotiations, that it was going to drastically alter the facade of the building. And our goal the entire time was to add to the facade and not take away. And since it's a drastic change and we know it's a unique scenario, we know we're in a little bit of a unique situation. So if you folks have any questions, what we have prepared for next week is some options for what visually it would look like, what our initial plans were, and then some possible alternatives as well.
Questions, comments?
Is there, what's the reason that you couldn't have multiple smaller tanks?
Yeah, which is what, that's our-
To become less, less obtrusive, even easier to screen?
Yeah, that's our current scenario, sir. That's exactly where, part of our secret sauce as a business, which by the way, this is our second location in Westfield. Our original is in Bridgewater. We used to be called the Better U Wellness. We currently have a permanent storage solution. It's just not 19 feet tall, and it's not in the front of the building. It's 12 feet tall, and it's, it's a cost efficiency, sir. Right now, that facility is costing me five times less what our, our Grand Park facility is costing us. And as a small business that chose to grow maybe faster than anticipated, but the reality is we had a tremendous demand in Grand Park. It's a unique opportunity for us because our business service is active people. So for us, Grand Park location is a very unique location, and nitrogen is our number one expense outside of rent and payroll. And that number one expense, the reason that the nitrogen salad has to be so tall is because of the cost efficiency long-term. The contracts with our air gas suppliers are 10-year contracts, and in order to keep our costs down long over time, that's the, it's one of our only options. So it's either, right, right now, it really is five times the amount of what we should be paying, and it's just not efficient enough. We, we won't be able to sustain that as a business. And it's also a volume play. Our facility, this is a 2,500-square-foot facility. They could service 120 people per hour. It's a very unique scenario, especially for the volume that Grand Park has and Pacers Athletic Center has as well. And in order for us to maintain that, I need more nitrogen. That's the storage. I need to be prepared for peaks for the amount of athletes that can come through in a single day. And right now, our, my distributors simply can't do that for me. And I've run out of nitrogen a few times, and most of the customer, we have hundreds of members between our two facilities, and 75% of them are Westfield residents. So it's really hard for me to upset people that are choosing to commit membership money to me over time.
So let me, I'm not sure I understood the answer to the question. You have a 19-foot, you're wanting a 19-foot tower.
Yes, sir. It's a, it's a-
So why not have two 10s? You would still have the volume purchasing so that you wouldn't have any additional costs.
Unfortunately, I wouldn't. So the logistics process for nitrogen distribution requires a larger, larger silo for a larger tanker to be able to fill it. If I drop down in size, anything below 16 feet, that automatically puts me in the price category. That trip was my cost.
I guess I, I guess I have a problem with, this one goes empty, this one gets down to about-
Oh, I, I promise, in the perfect world, that's my perfect scenario as well, sir. It's, these are the options that were presented to me based on cost for, from the nitrogen distributors, and this is the best solution.
So you, you stated earlier that it was always your intention to come back before us with this. Did you ever tell us that you, that was your ultimate goal? So there's a 19-foot tank in front of the building, which you have to understand from our standpoint, is kind of an eyesore.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, again, cosmetically, that being the number one concern. We were under the impression that during the initial submission from our contractor, who's no longer our contractor, that that was already submitted, and it wasn't until very recently that it was presented to us that this section wasn't submitted, and that we, we weren't aware. We, we spent three months under the impression that everything was handled, and because we paid all our permitting fees, we were under the impression that the permitting was completed. So it was a, it was a bit of a surprise when this became an issue, which without a doubt, our, our goal is to add to Grand Park. It's not to take away. And by the way, we have visual presentations for you for next week.
No offense, that's up there.
Yes, sir. Inside a corporate village. Yeah, that's a permitted building. It's on the side of the building.
Do you have a permit for the-
Mm-hmm. It's a fully enclosed, yes, sir. It's fully enclosed. Again, because of this, the location of it and the size, the one in Bridgewater is only 12 feet tall, and that's what-
It's 12-foot enclosed.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
For me, this is a deal breaker, 19-foot out there. It doesn't fit.
I can't see it either. It's just unacceptable for the level of architecture, what we've made the developers do out in Grand Park, and then to put something like that right in front of that is awful. I just can't see it.
Okay. Since, since day one, the intent was to wrap the silo. What you saw was a construction version, and the plan is to spend $10,000 on the silo, on the wrap, and to change the visual appearance of the silo itself to add to the building. I fully understand the 19 feet, and that's why we were planning on having it taken care of from the very beginning. So here's our scenario. If you folks ask us to relocate it to the side, we're looking at an $88,000 cost that we weren't planning for, and all of a sudden the $700,000 that I invested turns into $800,000 that I wasn't planning for, and for-
If I were in Westfield where I would actually allow something like that at the front of a building, I just, that, that's not acceptable. Can't do it.
Several months ago, we had a conversation with the potential user for the adjacent parcel and used this building as an example of the standards that we were expecting. The user's ending up going somewhere else, it appears. But we emphasized how important it was and that this was a building that actually wasn't even as good as what was initially presented to us. It was really well done. So there's, if there is something that you're going to be able to do to make it look like the building and not like a tank-
Yeah, absolutely.
-we'll have a dialogue, but I don't see that in front of me tonight.
Sure.
Yeah, if I may. Thank you, Council. Billy Bunkfist, Grand Park Fieldhouse, L.C., DBA Pacers Athletic Center. So we've been talking with Connie extensively on this because I'm sure most of you know my boss, and it's all about the gold standard and how this is going to look. So for us, the biggest selling point is what this is able to do for our business as well. So they may be a tenant, but they're also a partner. So when we have these large groups come in, Nike, UIBL, USA Basketball, all these large tournament draws, one of the biggest sellers is the fact that we are able now to offer cryogenics. Nike, UIBL came in, paid for 400 athletes to go into Connie's suite. So if he has to keep hemorrhaging $5,000 a week without the larger silo, then ultimately, we're going to have a situation where we have the tenant leave us, and then we're going to lose that aspect of what we can do, with that being said on the aesthetics of it. If you can picture the front facade of that, we went with that kind of ruined brick masonry. The plan is a fully enclosed silo all the way to the top, much like his Bridgewater location, which again, post approval to go to the APC, we will have all of those plans. This was just introductory tonight. And so that will not be seen. You will see a brick facade looking much like the rest of it, with screening on both sides of our logo, their logo, and any other logos deemed necessary for that. So just speaking frankly from the landlord's side, we fully approve of this, and we think it is a great aspect to our business and a great addition to what we can do. Thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions or comments whenever it's appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Chuck.
So you said from the beginning, when is that? When is the beginning?
When we first started having our lease negotiations. So part of this, as you could tell, if, if your second largest expense is-
Just tell me when that was, please.
Um, we started talking, November, I believe, when we started talking to Andy.
But it, it sounded like, almost to me, like the beginning was the beginning of building the building. You're a tenant there, is that correct?
Yeah. So the reason it got brought up from the beginning is because it is such a large expense for us. And without this arrangement, if I have to use temporary nitrogen, it's kind of what Billy said, I'm no longer left with options, and I have, well, most likely have to break my lease. The cost is too expensive.
I understand, but it's just a cost of doing business like anyplace else. I mean, from, from, from the, from what I'd call the beginning, of us seeing renderings of the building going back to day one, we even gave wiggle room there, okay? So to put a tank out front, or even a, you know, a big enclosure, even that is going to have to really tie in architecturally really, really well.
Yeah. And if you look at the visual representation, the goal is to match the brick perfectly to where visually it, it looks like there's nothing in the front. And the sides will be wrapped with the logos that the landlord requests.
If you want to talk about surprises, this is a surprise because I haven't seen this till today.
Yeah. But by the way, this was thrown on us very abruptly, and I'll be honest with you, we've been trying to prepare just as well as we could. This was not a planned situation.
The more they can be done to make it look like this doesn't exist.
Yeah.
In other words, it should be architecturally part of the building.
Yes, sir.
And no one should suspect, in my opinion, that there's a big cylinder behind there that's 19 feet tall. So if you can accomplish that, and it doesn't look like a protrusion in the building that just looks out of place, I mean, I certainly want your business to succeed there. And I think it does-
Yes, sir. I appreciate that.
...offer some amenities that may not be available in many places.
Yes, sir.
But it has to blend, and, and moving it to the side would certainly-
Too much.
Be probably the best for us from an architectural standpoint, but, you know, looking at this, well, what you just gave us is certainly a major improvement.
Yes, sir.
But it, from what I can see, it just, it looks like an enclosure to screen something.
It would absolutely be a better detail.
So it, it needs to, like I say, the, the more you can do to make it look like it's not there, the better your chances of approval.
Absolutely.
The rendering you just gave us is in a totally different location than the red dot.
That, we have an amendment and a proposal on there with an actual location.
Does this have to sit on grade, or can this be in a well?
Yeah, unfortunately, this is a pad that has to be a specific thickness, and there's a-
Can the thickness start 10 feet underground?
I don't believe that that's an option. It's a great question.
Might be a good one to look into.
I would love to.
Does it have to be vertical, or will it work horizontal?
The original plan was, in a perfect world, to have a horizontal, but there's some, there's some lines there that will prevent us from digging. The horizontal is quite large. It's 25 feet in length. We're talking about significantly larger pad.
Trying to help you be resourceful here to-
Oh, no, I appreciate it.
Gain some traction with this.
My, my, my big, my big parameters are set by Air Gas, which is our nitrogen distributor, and those are for safety first, and that's the number one concern.
Well, this is an introduction to, to the council. You do have a hearing next Monday at APC and their consideration July 1. You've heard the concerns of the council people. Unless there's an objection, we'll go ahead and move it on to APC. But I think you've heard the concerns, and two of these members do sit on the APC, so you will probably hear some of the same comments again.
I'm one of those two.
If there's an objection, we'll move it on.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. I appreciate the feedback, of course.
Okay. Hardness 19-21. Pam.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, we have a proposed new PUD district to be known as Midtown at Westfield to accommodate a mixed-use development. This 138-acre site is located on the east side of US 31, both north and south of 191st Street. And the properties are currently zoned AGSF1, SF3, EI, and LB zoning districts. The ordinance proposes six sub-districts, which would permit a variety of business uses as well as multifamily residential uses. It also proposes underlying zoning of GB, GO, and EI. The proposed ordinance outlines several development standards and also includes character exhibits to guide the development of the real estate. The public hearing for this item is scheduled for the July 15 Plan Commission Meeting. I do have the developer Steve Henke here to make a presentation, after which both he and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Henke, for the record, President of Henke Development, 1100 Chatham Hills Boulevard, Westfield, Indiana. We really appreciate this opportunity to present to the council this evening our plans for the IMMI property, the Anthony family. This property, as Pam just indicated, is located just east of, of 31. Right here's your 31 intersection in 191st Street, and here, of course, is East Street. This is, of course, going up to the Bastion area. This, the Anthony, this property has been acquired over a number of years by the Anthony family and surrounds their, their world headquarters. World headquarters are located right in this location, which I'm sure all of you have seen over the years. And I say world headquarters because they have grown to the point now where they have over 1,200 employees worldwide. They have plants and operations in Slovakia, Mexico, England, Italy, and China. And so, but this is, this is their world headquarters. They have, they have taken great pride in this, in this area, in, as far as what is developed, is to be developed in this area. They have been great stewards, as you know, of the community, their philanthropy, their, their activities, their, their training, and of course, all the employees and economic benefits that has brought to the community. The, we, we're honored that they have selected us to develop this property for them. They are in this for the long term. They are not simply wanting to, to develop this as quick as it can be, but they want quality development, the highest possible quality development that can be attained in, in this area. They do plan to own a lot of their buildings and build a suit. The family will, will continue doing that. There may be ground leases. There may also be situations where ground is sold, but their primary interest is retaining control of the property and building this to be the finest commercial development, Class A office space and everything in, in Westfield. If you're looking at the, the layout, we've worked almost a year now with the family, coming up with the best alternatives, the best plans to present for this area. And part of what we're doing here is you'll see this area adjacent to 31 being, being retail area, this being area here being hotels- being retail area, this being area here being hotels, office buildings. The area in the front yard of the IMMI, we see that as a multi-story office building and/or hotel with retail in the lower level. As we then approach to the east of East Street, we see, you see lakes and ponds all down through this area. We have a residential development here. We're creating an area where we have a large buffer of water, as well as landscaping all into that area. Same thing here, there's a residential area just north of the development. The Anthony's recently acquired this property north of the creek, and we will be creating that into a lake and park area. This area in here then would also be office, as well as retail. We see the corners of the roundabout of East Street and 191st Street is a really unique opportunity. A really unique opportunity to create bookend-type brick buildings, your Williamsburg style, which the lower level would be retail, almost your village and shops, coffee shops, ice cream, and so forth in that area. One of the, one of the real keys also to the whole development of this area is most of your office buildings today, and you heard it earlier as Bastion, that they were talking about in North Point, people having places to go for restaurants and shops, things like that. This is where we've really put a lot of time into planning this. And we've also talked to North Point developers who have indicated that's what people are looking for, places to go to and shop. One of the most prominent office building developers in Indianapolis recently had a discussion with me about two weeks ago, and he talked about that your office buildings standing alone are a thing of the past. It's not going to happen anymore. That the millennials and everybody want walkability, they want to be able to walk at lunch, they want to be able to go to shops, they want to walk on trails, so forth. The Anthony's for many years have been ahead of that curve and have trails around their property. But that will also help, this will help North Point, because you're not going to have retail, you're not going to have shops, restaurants, things like that up in that area. But you can down in this area here. It's an easy bike ride, it's an easy walk. We see corporate offices and buildings having bicycles and being able to walk and ride bikes on the trails. As you go to the southern part of the property, there's also residential down here, and so we show that as a less dense use. Could be senior living, assisted living, townhomes, and that type of, type of use. The overall, the overall project is about 130, 138 acres. And as I said, one of the key things is the quality of the development. The Anthony's plan to be here for a long time with their world headquarters here. They're one of the leading companies in the world on restraint systems in military vehicles, as well as, as well as all types of commercial vehicles, automobiles and everything. With their testing and everything else, they're really one of the leading companies in the world. Matt, do you want to hit me with the characterisms? Characterisms? Can you scroll down? There you go. There, down, down just a little bit, by the way. There you go, okay. When we talk about village center and bookends, as far as really creating an entry at the roundabout on 191st Street, it's this type of product that we're looking at, that has shops, restaurants, more of that Williamsburg colonial look, but yet you have your brick facades upstairs, maybe offices, maybe apartments. This is in a development in New Albany, Ohio. Great development, it's a less western development, about a 4,000-acre development. And this is actually on a roundabout. You can see the corner, how it's shifted this way. We put the parking behind it. But you can picture something like this in each of the corners of the roundabout as you're proceeding east. And then you would have, you know, your office buildings and so forth behind, behind that. The buildings would have character. This right here is a Starbucks. Again, that's taken from New Albany, and on the other side of Columbus. A lot of character to the buildings. And that's, you can, one can afford to do that when you're looking at to hold it long-term. It's not someone coming in on a short-term investment that's going to just put in as little as they can and either sell it or move on. It's a development that they will, they will continue, you know, to own. This is also another example of what, of your open, you know, opening areas, especially if your roundabout was coming in this area. You can have fountains and so forth there. This, again, is another example here, and I'm trying to think. Again, that type of situation is, again, is the same situation, where you're having, you're having your shops and village, and you create that entrance, that gateway. And from that, then, you have the remaining, the rest of your development. But this is what attracts office buildings, this is what attracts your Class A office space. These type of amenities are necessary to really develop high-end office buildings as a Class A office space today. So, we look forward to working with, with the council, with the Plan Commission, with the neighbors in the area to work out a very positive PUD that will bring a great economic benefit to the city, as well as aesthetics, and something everyone will be proud of. Certainly available for any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Comments?
Have you scheduled the neighbor meeting yet?
I believe, I believe we have a date for that. I think it's the 26th? 26th? 26th of this month.
Can you send us the details?
Absolutely will. Sure.
Thanks, Steve, I think it looks tremendous.
Thank you.
And I've been to New Albany, by the way.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you back here again sometime soon. Next item. Westchester PUD Amendment, Pam.
Thank you again, Mr. President, members of the council. Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, we have a proposed amendment to the architectural standards of the Westchester Planned Unit Development District, along with a modification of the associated commitments. This PUD district is located on the east side of Town Road, between 151st Street and 169th Street. The proposed amendment involves removing two standards from the commitments and incorporating them into the PUD ordinance itself, while also modifying both standards. The petitioner will provide detail, specific details on the modifications. This item is scheduled for a public hearing at the July 1st Plan Commission meeting. I do have John Dabishewitz here to present on behalf of the petitioner, after which both he and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. For the record, my name is John Dabishewitz. I'm a land use professional with the law firm Nelson &amp; Frankenberger. I am here tonight on behalf of Platinum Properties. With me this evening is Jim Schinever, an attorney with our office, and other members of our development team. By way of general background, the Westchester PUD was approved by the City Council in January 2018 and included certain zoning commitments. Subsequently last year, three primary plots were approved by the Plan Commission, including Northwind, Southwind, and Westchester, which Pam just reviewed the location of those three areas of the development in the Westchester PUD. This evening Platinum is requesting to modify the Westchester zoning commitments to delete certain provisions from the zoning commitments and move those provisions into a PUD amendment. The following provisions of the Westchester zoning commitments would be deleted. It would be Section 1, Paragraph 5 regarding the number of builders. That provision would be deleted, and the text of that provision would be added without change into the ordinance amendment. Staff requested that item be pulled from the commitments and inserted into the PUD amendment for administrative purposes, and no change is being proposed regarding that text. The second provision is Section 1, Paragraph 6 regarding building materials, and it reads verbatim, "The predominant exterior building material on the front elevation of the home shall be carried around at varying percentages on the remaining sides of the home. This percentage will be determined by the individual builder." That section would be deleted, and an amendment would be made, which includes that text into a PUD amendment. Continued compliance would result with three options. And I'm going to move to the slides in a minute when I want to just describe those to you. One of three items would be elected by individual builders. One would be compliance with that text that I just read. They can keep on complying with the commitment as written for many of the home products. As I'll describe momentarily, there are other products that makes that difficult. One option of the three options is compliance, continued compliance with that commitment language. The second would be adding a masonry wainscote along the entire perimeter of the house, 360-degree architecture, both the front, sides, and rear of the homes, which we'll provide examples in a moment. The third option for compliance would be to add a corner break consisting of a sunroom, screen porch, or cover patio, or other similar feature on the rear elevation of the home. It's because the rear elevation of the home is where it presents the difficulty in complying. And if I can call your attention to the image on display, this is an example of a home. And where the problem comes into play is if you have this home, the predominant front material, as highlighted here in green, is a shake-style siding. It's still fiber cement siding, it's got a shake design. And in the situation where the builder would want to offer a home like this that has either board and batten, the vertical siding, or a shake-style material like this, there are appropriate areas that we can find, and this would be an example, across the bottom of the sides and rear of a home. When you look at the sides and rear of a home, this being the right side elevation, this being the left, in the gable end, you can add that material, the shake-style material in the peak of that roof, and it's very appropriate in design. When you look at the rear of this home, this is a rear elevation of the home, while it's got a corner break and an offset with a patio here. Let me show you some photographs of what we've reviewed with the builders. This is three examples of what would typically, well, not typically, but an example of a situation like this where we're presented with the problem. There's no appropriate area for the builder to add that shake-style material on the rear elevation of the homes as shown here in the three examples, the one, two, and three examples of how that would play out. So the alternative that's being proposed, we're trying to do here, is enhance the architecture of the house. One option would be, and you've seen, this is the same elevation of that house, the builder would commit, if they left the front elevation as it's proposed, with the shake-style material or the board and batten, that they would do a brick wrap 360 around the entire perimeter of the house. That meets the intent of providing a combination of building materials on all four sides of the house. Another option to comply, and that example of the brick masonry wainscote would be present here in photographs that we provided for your consideration. This would be the rear elevation of the home with the masonry. This shows a side in the front of the house. This shows a front and a side of a two-story dwelling, where it may be in these areas, you can see the vertical siding, but in other areas, that board and batten or shake-style siding makes up a higher percentage. It might be the highest percentage, it's 35% of the front elevation. Therefore, we must, we're required to carry it along the side in the back. And it might not be appropriate that that same style be carried along the backside. The third option for consideration would be to, at a minimum, provide a covered patio, a screen porch, or a room addition, or sunroom on the back of the house as a means of complying with that standard. So again, there's three options. Option A, the builder continues to comply with the requirement and the commitment. Option B, adding masonry wainscote at a minimum on all four sides, or a corner break. Again, this does not apply to all homes of all types, they can continue to comply with most of them. This is only in a situation where you've got a shake-style or a board and batten-style material along the rear elevation of the house. I'll scoot back up to the first image here on display. If the area that was identified there in shake was just a standard horizontal siding, the home elevations would comply as presented, because that horizontal siding would be present both on the, both sides and rear elevation of the house. So the purpose of the amendment is to address the unforeseen and unintended result of the commitment, where we have that certain material, the shake or board and batten siding as the predominant exterior material on the front of the house. We're trying, we're trying to present alternatives which would make more sense and enhance the design and variety of homes throughout the subdivision. Of course, later this month, we have a planned neighborhood meeting that would occur on June 20th. We will send out to the council notice of that meeting to occur for all residents who would receive notice of the Plan Commission's meeting, which is intended to be held on July 1st. We've heard from a couple of council members. One of the Plan Commission members reached out to us, wants some additional information. We're going to get a meeting scheduled with them to provide the additional information. There's no rush for judgment on this matter. If there's additional consideration that needs to be given, we'll reach out and meet with the Plan Commission, as well as council, before we come back to you for adoption consideration. With that, I would conclude, be glad to address questions or comments the council has now, and items that you would want to see the Plan Commission consider as part of their review of this request. Thank you.
Council, any questions or concerns?
I think the concerns that I have, and the concerns that I've heard, are that this is a lessening of standards. And I think that as this moves forward, we have to make sure that this is not lessening the standards, but perhaps enhancing them. Obviously, we don't, we do not want architecturally incompatible buildings, but we also want to make sure that the intent of this, which was to carry, to really to get foresighted architecture and to carry common elements from the front. Most of the fronts of our homes are beautiful with architecture, with brackets and shutters and all kinds of stuff. And then, when you get to the sides and the back, most of that goes away. And with this PUD in particular, that was what the major intent was with this commitment, was to prevent that type of building. So we have to make sure as this moves forward that that is in fact prevented. And I think that some, to me, the just adding a porch on the back does not meet that commitment, because many of our, many of the homes that I think we would consider inappropriate have a bump out on the back of some sort. But there's really nothing that carries, you know, if the peak of that then has some of the building materials, then maybe that's fine. But to just do away with the building materials on the back, I don't think it's going to be acceptable. So I just think it needs some work going forward. I'm willing to work with developers on making sure we have appropriate products, but we want to make sure we don't lessen the standards.
That's our intent. We appreciate your interest in the petition.
I agree with Steve, the conversation that we had, and I said this was kind of difficult to get my arms around, that it was a very visual thing probably, that I needed to see some real-world examples, which you have done a pretty good job of bringing here. But I agree that the back views that are shown may not be compatible with what the ordinance reads today, but there's got to be something a little bit better, probably. And I think we can work our way through it. And it may be that the porches, corner breaks can create housing features that are compatible then with the materials that we were trying to figure out how to get there that in the original, original elevation did not. So I think you got the ball rolling in the right direction, but I'm not sure it's there yet.
Understood.
John, when this was put together, was there not a committee formed or a group of people, there were three members to approve changes or look at this? Has that been done?
That committee hasn't been reconvened. The committee's charge was to approve additional builders. But I think it would be, if your suggestion is for us to get together with them and solicit their input on this change, we can surely do that.
I think that would be a very wise thing to do.
Also, John, I think this is a good example of how things have been changing quite quickly. Even in the last few years, we've tried to put an emphasis on the foresighted architecture. And this is just another example of how the rear of the home is even more important. So I feel your intent, but we just have to make sure that the language and, that it's carried out. So appreciate the attention to detail.
Thank you. Again, there's no rush. If we're scheduled for a July 1st public hearing... If we're scheduled for a July 1st public hearing from the plan commission, ordinarily, we would return back to them in August, so there's two weeks of time between now and that, actually, three weeks of time between now and the plan commission's meeting, and then a month between the two meetings. So we have ample time to solicit all input from all the, all the interested parties.
Any other questions or comments? We'll move it to APC, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Jonathan, ordinance 19-23, Union Row.
Good evening, council. Jonathan Dorsey from UCD. For introduction tonight is the Union Row Plan Unit Development located at 606 South Union and 608 South Union Street. For a total of 2.5 acres, this PUD will change the site's current AGSF1I Agricultural Single-Family Westfield District to an enhanced SF3 Single-Family Moderate Density District. This project plans on developing seven single-family homes at this location, and this project has appeared for the Grand Junction Task Group and has received their full support. This is planned to go before APC for public hearing on July 1st. Here tonight is Jesse Pullman, who plans on making a presentation for more details on the project. Both he and I are available for questions afterwards.
Good evening. You know it's been a long council meeting when it's past your mayor's bedtime. For the record, Jesse Pullman with On Point Land Matters, presenting this evening on behalf of Patch, with Patch Development, who's with me here this evening. As Jonathan had noted, I'm here to introduce to you our request for the change of zoning for the two and a half acres. They're located on the east side of Union Street, just south of South Street. As depicted in the exhibits, the requested zoning is for a PUD district to be known as Union Row, that will accommodate the proposed infill subdivision of seven high-end detached homes, which we're anticipating will be in the price range of between $400,000 and $600,000 each. The property is currently zoned the AGSF1I district and is located within the area designated by the comprehensive plan as downtown, and then further designated within the Union sub-district of the junction part of the comprehensive plan. As such, as Jonathan had noted, we presented to the Grand Junction Task Group last week and received their support. The proposed ordinance that's in front of you includes standards that are consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods, as well as other infill developments that you've recently approved in or near downtown. As depicted in the exhibits, the homes will have garages that are located in the rear with an emphasized streetscape that aligns with the traditional architecture and pedestrian orientation of Union Street. Prior to the scheduled public hearing at July 1st for the plan commission, we are hosting and would like to invite you to our open house for neighbors, which will be held next Tuesday, June 18th, at 6:30. And we'll host that just up the street in the community room at Union Street Flats. We believe that Union Row is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and specifically that further, furthers the objective of the comprehensive plan to attract additional households into downtown. So in closing, if you have any questions or comments for us this evening, we'd be happy to take those with us as we move through the public process. Otherwise, we'd like to thank you for your time.
Council members, questions, concerns, clarifications?
I have a question. You talk about, like, you know, granny-in-law suite or whatever as an accessory use, and is it envisioned that those would be a second story on a garage in the back? Is that a possibility?
Yes.
So in the rear there, which would be kind of a budding those neighborhoods, or those neighbors on the cul-de-sac, is potentially another dwelling unit, if you will, where those garages are, right?
Yeah, so the detached garages are in the back. Obviously, as a concept plan, the standards of the ordinance in full disclosure require that the garages are either detached, or they're attached to the rear of the home either in a side-load or a rear-load scenario. But part of the trend that you're seeing, especially as communities and families continue to be more multi-generational for a variety of reasons, that particular unit is something that we felt was of value for this particular project, and we talk about downtowns. You're seeing a lot of surrounding communities start to address it and embrace it. And so in this scenario, if it were to be in a detached garage, it would be in that detached garage. From a scale perspective, I mean, you're still, the setback here is much greater than a traditional lot would be. These are roughly a third of an acre in size, and so there's a lot of depth that would be there between.
What is the required setback that you're looking for?
Off the top of my head, I believe we defaulted to the underlying zoning in this situation, but if there's a concern about that, we could definitely visit increasing that if that's something that you're concerned about.
I guess my brain just started to think, you know, as long as it's subordinate in size to the primary dwelling, right, then it would be permissible. And if somebody had, say, a 3,000-square-foot home, could they have an extra 2,500 square foot somehow back there? You know, we don't use lot coverage like most communities do. So I'm just wondering how that plays out in that scenario.
Yeah, it's a good comment. That's something we can look at.
And also, there's a few inconsistencies, like you show foundation plannings in your elevations, but yet you're asking for no foundation plannings. You exempted yourself.
The exemption in the PUD is a, I'll call it an oversight in the UDO, where it requires them along all foundations. Because of this design, the focus is you'll have them, it'll still be required along the front facade, so you'll have them along Union Street side, and then we're still defaulting to the minimum lot landscaping requirements, which is generally depicted what you see on the concept plan. So the only place you would not have required foundation plannings would be along the side and the rear of the home.
I think we might want to work on some of that, just born in you.
And just out of curiosity, is there a specific, like, area that you're concerned about related to that foundation?
Actually, it was taken together with the lot landscaping, because that was the only thing you were asking to use. I'll get you the specifics.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I mean, to put you on the spot, just curious.
A long night.
Other, other questions, comments? All right, then we'll move this on to APC.
I do have, I do have one comment before we move on. I like the idea of having some potential living in the back. I do, I should do share Cindy's concern, though, that that could become a major dwelling unit. So I think we need to consider how we limit that, either through square footage, or some way, I think there needs to be limitations on that. And we may also want to consider a bigger rear yard setback, or if that were to occur, since there would be somebody living back there.
I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just kind of want to know it's coming, and factor that in in advance if that's the case, and for neighbors to know that that could be the case.
Sure.
I think it's kind of exciting as well. Everything you've rendered here has conventional detached garages. Not everybody that shows up at meetings has great imaginations, and might be helpful to illustrate what you could foresee happening back there.
The, this is a great opportunity because of the depth of the lot, so that's very positive. So we encourage you to get creative.
And we're excited to be able to have a plan that embraces that downtown feel that I think, although we've had some neat infill homes in downtown, I think this one truly is more that, that traditional feel, being able to tuck those cars back behind the homes, which is, I think, from this perspective, is very exciting on our end, because we think there's a market demand for it here in Westfield.
My understanding is there's one that's already pre-sold pending approval here, and the second one possible. You know, this, this will probably add 10 times the value of the AV in that little area to Westfield's assessed value. So there really is the demand here and some creativity going into this that enhances the revenue to the city, but yet also creates a product that's kind of unique in the Grand Junction area. So we'll move it to APC.
Thank you.
Okay, last ordinance item to deal with, ordinance 1924, Caleb Bridlewood Subdivision.
Good evening, council. For the record, Keila Bernus with Economic and Community Development Department. The item presented for introduction is a rezone request from the Bridlewood Subdivision HOA, provided to you as an exhibit. The Bridlewood subdivision is located at the southwest corner of 151st Street and Carey Road. This area is approximately 73 acres and is currently zoned SBPD, Special Business Plan Development District. To provide some history on this petition, in the recent months, the city has processed a couple of variances in the Bridlewood subdivision. Both variances were in regards to the pre-existing non-conforming uses and conditions of the residential lots. If any resident were to make any residential improvements to their property, they would be required to submit a variance to bring their site into compliance. As mentioned, the current zoning SBPD district is an old zoning classification that is not used anymore, and the city, with the HOA's support, has initiated this zoning change to eliminate the pre-existing non-conforming uses and conditions of the Bridlewood subdivision. The city is proposing a change in zoning from the SBPD district to SF4 Single-Family High Density, as this zoning district will accommodate the pre-existing conditions of the subdivision and bring the residential lots into compliance with today's standards. If the council has any questions for staff, I am available. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Isn't the density more like an SF2 or 3?
No, this was built to SF4 standards.
Was it really?
Yep.
In my, my understanding from previous conversation, if somebody doesn't want to go along with this, they don't have to necessarily go along with it. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody didn't want their problem fixed, we could remove them from the petition if they had their request. Yeah, yeah.
Never know in this world, so.
Yeah, you never know. This was, this is actually, will eliminate probably 98% of the non-conforming conditions in this neighborhood that we've been able to identify.
I remember when I was first on APC and trying to figure out what this corner, like half-mile square, whatever it was, that all this applied to, what was that all about it? It best seemed like a meatloaf of zoning classification. What is the reason for only doing it at Bridlewood and not the neighborhood to the west?
It just, this problem revealed itself here, so first things first, I mean, upon request.
We'll roll it down to the west eventually.
Upon request, we could do this for any non-conforming subdivision. This one actually just happens to neatly fit, I mean, into the SF4 classification. Some of the others may not be that neat.
And there's something to the south, too.
They did.
So there's another neighborhood south, too, I asked about west, because that's what shows up on the map, but seems like a.
We could, we could do this for others if we needed, if we need to.
Anything else? All right, we'll move this one also on to APC. One other miscellaneous business item, approval of a food truck at Westfield Washington Public Library on July 12th. Do we know how many food trucks are gonna be here?
Someone here from the library? Trip off with me? There we go. Hi, Marie.
I fell asleep, sorry. Thank you for allowing me to speak, council members. I am Marie Ansich, I work at the Westfield Washington Public Library. I, we're part of the summer reading group. We're going to have a concert on July 12th between 7:00 and 9:00 in the library parking lot. Last year, we had the same concert, and it went over very well, but we couldn't get a food truck because we applied too late. So this year, we thought we'd try a little bit earlier, hopefully you'll approve us. There's only one food truck, and the people will purchase their food items. The library will offer water and ice cream free of charge to whoever shows up for the program. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Need a motion to approve the food truck, or motion, yeah, approve the food truck?
Make a motion to approve the food truck for the Westfield Washington Public Library on July 12th.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any adds further discussion? Let's just do this by a voice vote, please. Any, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Unanimous? Got your food. Do we have any cards?
We do not.
Okay, on to city council comments. Anything from APC?
APC met last Monday evening. We approved the Staybridge Suites detailed development plan up at 191st Street. We sent favorable recommendations to this body on the Westfield Center PUD, the Washington High School PUD, which we acted on earlier. We also had held a public hearing on the Fox Hollow PUD, which consists of, I believe it's four lots averaging about three acres, two acres per lot. Had no, no one speak on that, and the final item was a public hearing on Spring Mill Trails PUD Amendment. That was it.
Okay, I might, I might just ask, we were given a couple of items to look at that did not come to the agenda tonight on tax abatement issues, and didn't know perhaps anyone had comments about that. Staff is looking for any feedback on that. That would be Round Travers, I Beach would be two of those that were there. So does anybody have any comments before they, they move forward with anything, just your feeling on those particular abatement items, if you've had a chance to review those? Knowing that they weren't on the agenda, you may not have taken a detailed look.
I, kind of the same as all the others that we've gotten and will continue to get, I'm sure. I think it's unfortunate that that has become an expectation of businesses, but as we heard tonight, it is. And that's what they look for, that's what they're, that's what everybody expects. So I guess, I mean, we have, we do, we have given other abatements in that, in that same general area in the past, and so I don't, like I say, as much as I hate to, I, I really don't want to take a chance on losing these businesses either, because both of them play into our sports future and our planning, so I guess that's my comments. I don't know, it's a hard decision, but.
Probably doesn't make a lot of sense to me to, to talk about the difference between seven and 10-year, to alienate or to, to really set us, ourselves apart, because you're down at the end where it doesn't make a lot of difference anyway. So we have to be competitive. I mean, I just, I just don't think it's really in our best interest to be nitpicking the last couple of years.
I understand the seven and 10, in fact, the net result's probably about the same. Either do one seventh over seven years or one tenth over 10, but the net's the same. But in the cases of I, of these two, seems to me like there are very few jobs that could be created, and the quality or the high of the payment of the jobs would be not very high, and I'm, I'm all for economic development. If it's going to bring in high-paying jobs and bring in a lot of jobs to the area, the employment sector, so I, I guess I have some concerns with that particular part of it, but I don't know if anybody else it is.
I think we're exhausted.
It is, well, I mean, it does bring, I mean, it does bring value in the buildings. I mean, we, if they don't build there, we get, we get no taxes. And I guess that's the risk we take. We can force that hand at some time and say, no, we're not gonna give it to you, and hope that they still build. My fear is that, I think some might, but I think many of them are going to move to greener pastures, and I think that's unfortunate. It's tough. It's a kind of a no-win, but.
May I?
Before, before you do that, just one more comment. You did say that there were a couple other requests, and I do think that they're specific, or they're project-specific, okay? You're, you're correct, Doc, when, when there is not a lot of creativeness in jobs and those types of revenues, I think we have to take a look at that. I, I want to clarify that I was more leaning my comments towards what we heard earlier this evening, not to what maybe someone out there doesn't understand, but. this evening, not to what maybe someone out there doesn't understand, but we have had requests for other projects that were, didn't have the same overall economic impact, so I would look at those individually. So that's my response, is I think we need to look at them individually, but we have to be competitive at, per project, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think that makes a lot of sense, Chuck, and I agree.
What did you understand he just said, so I can understand it?
What Chuck said?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're project-specific.
Yes.
We have to take a look at our resources and where we can best use them.
Are you saying each one is different?
Yes.
I'm saying to a point, yes, they are, because of job creation and investment and the impact to the community. Some of the projects, I think we have to go back to day one, it's, and I don't want this to sound negative, but some of the projects, maybe we don't want.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so...
That's why, yeah, I'm glad to hear you say that, because we, as the administration, we need guidelines from you. Each one is totally different. You cannot adopt a policy towards tax abatements. There are way too many factors. What you saw ha, happen tonight was, was frankly, was a little embarrassing, because we're trying, you know, we've, we've been working with, with a lot of you when we, we, when we get these. We had, unless there were some great misunderstandings, the administration, Mrs. Rubidou, through our instructions, had worked out a seven-year tax abatement with these people. And I don't know where we got mixed up, but they stood in front of you and asked for ten. Well, that's, that's a little embarrassing right now. And I understand, every one of these is completely different. We have not had the pleasure of being asked for a whole lot. A, only in the last four or five years has this city had some real property that we could entice these kind of businesses to. We're also very, very used to, maybe spoiled by the Grand Park syndrome, in that no entity involved, right now anyway, in the business of sports has been granted a tax abatement. Why? Because Grand Park has created a very unique and profitable environment for businesses. So we, if a hotel wants to locate here because of Grand Park, they're not asking for tax abatements by threatening to go to Greenfield. So the Grand Park syndrome is, is in and of itself. Perhaps that won't last forever. But now we're into other areas. We have the, the, the great fortune to have North Point. And this administration, and I know you very well, when you make a decision about tax abatements, I mean, that is a big decision, because the decision you make is not only affects the taxes that we do not receive as a city, but you're affecting the schools to, to like seventy percent, schools, the county, the library. So it's certainly not a decision to be taken lightly, and I'm not saying that we do. But every one of these is different, and we, we talk a lot about jobs, and, and I don't, I don't want to downplay jobs, but the revenue impact back to a city, according to Indiana's tax system, jobs aren't a huge, direct result of our revenue. If they live here and spend money here, yes, but property taxes are one of the most important pieces that we have that affect our income and our revenue. The other one that is even of more immediate impact is the food and beverage tax. And fortunately, we haven't had to grant tax abatements, I don't think, to any restaurants, because they not only pay property taxes, but they pay food and beverage taxes immediately, which is a great income for us. You know that since Grand Park has come on board, our food and beverage annual income over the last five years has gone from three hundred thousand dollars a year to this year to over a million dollars a year. So yes, we want the restaurants. They don't pay all that well. I understand that, but they do have a very positive revenue impact, as do the hotels on, on our city. Now, you know, that's, the hospitality industry is like phase one. Phase two has been, we're looking at what we lump into a great category called advanced manufacturing, because of the uniqueness of our location, the uniqueness of our freeway, the uniqueness of the amount of land that's available in North Point. It is somewhat exclusive. It is not as exclusive as somebody wanting to locate because of Grand Park, but I feel like that we can be discriminatory. I mean that in a very broad sense. I do not believe we have to automatically grant a ten-year tax abatement to everybody that comes along. And that's why we're engaging the council on these where we can, as much as we can, to get your feedback, to avoid exactly what just happened tonight. We also get into situations, as you know, where, you know, I'd like to have more public direction from you on these, but we also get into situations where we cannot reveal who the applicant is. We're looking at a very large potential right now that we have discussed with some of you, the tax abatement ability, or the, our offer to a very large company, a lot of jobs, a lot of investment. There, we're competing with, directly with, out of, outside of the city. So, yeah, I, I don't, I wish we had no tax abatements, but that only works if we can convince all the other cities that that's the case, and that's not realistic. So it depends on the, on the threat, the re, the viability of the threat to go someplace else. And how do you assess that? Are these guys, are they just pulling our leg? You know, having been involved in several of these, we've been on the end of being the party abused to negotiate a better deal down the road. And that, that's the other chance that you take. So how far do you go? It's like, it's like playing poker. That's all it is. And so that's why, on each one of these, where we can going forward, and, and I'd love to have more public discussion about just your general thoughts on this, so that we can do a, a good job of pre-negotiating these. You always have the final word, but it's our job to assess what, the effects of having this, the jobs, yes, the, how, how much, are they going somewhere else? Can they go somewhere else? It's, it's a full-time job, just looking at these. And fortunately, we're seeing more and more of them. That's the good news. So yes, I welcome more discussion, whether it's publicly, one-on-one, from each one of you, so that we can better, together, make these presentations and these offers, so that we don't have the confusion that you just saw tonight.
Well, just for clarification, and from the tax standpoint, jobs don't make a difference, but jobs do make a difference if they locate in our community, because that brings wealth to our community, and those dollars circulate and tend to circulate and stay in our community.
Absolutely.
So, so that's the important aspect when we look at how many employees they're gonna have and where those employees are coming from. They might not live here, but there's some of them might, or there'd be some opportunities that bring...
And that's why, exactly, and that's why North Point and the environs are, are, you know, such a special place, because of our geography and our ability to bring the higher-paying jobs, because of the amenities that the city offers, like that Grand Park and our trail systems, the quality of our schools, our downtown. We can bring in the high-paying people, and we also have a market with our thirty-one and the developing freeway to, to more of a workforce, if, if that's the right word today, market. So geographically, we do have something special, and I just don't want to, to pass that out to everybody. And I think, as you council know, if you get into all the finances, financially, we are in a very secure position, from a cash in the bank, from a lack of a debt load, from, you know, what, what we owe and what our balances are, what the cash balances are. We are in a wonderful position. So we can afford to be patient, and I don't think we need to, to give away the store. I think we, we need to have agreed-upon overall strategy, and that's all it can be, is an overall strategy of how we best use the assets that we have.
Can I say one thing about this? Turn on my microphone. I know you just had a long conversation. It's late. I know a lot of communities at least have an overarching policy at some level that kind of is a trigger, at least it tells businesses, you have a good chance of being considered or you don't. And I feel like that's where something basic like that would be really handy for us. You know, I feel like almost everybody's wanting to come in, and they just factor that in from the get-go in their business plan and the pro forma, that they're getting an abatement. They're getting a ten-year, they're getting their, their five-year personal property, and almost that they just feel it's owed to them. And again, that, that's hard for me to take. I didn't grow up in that, in that era, if you will. You actually had to be providing real investment in a community to get that kind of thing. So, I, I don't know, for me, I think it'd just be handy overall if, whether it be this council, the next council, somebody sometime here at work on coming up with a strategy to at least have some basic things to work from, a basic framework that could at least tell...
You want to tackle that? God love you, let's go. Do you?
Maybe. It's late.
It's late.
It's late.
We don't even have a clock anymore. I don't know that it's late. What happened to our clock?
We were, we were asking the same thing.
I think, I think to respond to that, though, I'd like just a minute. I think that I, I, she's totally right, but it's just not an environment in which we can do that. I mean, it sounds really good, but for us to sit here or, or spend the hours and the time to create a, a strategy or a policy that would be specific, you know, broad, is, is not reasonable. It just isn't. So I think we're doing a good job to, to, at this particular point, be project-specific. And I think that, that we have a good strategy and so forth, and we can talk in more detail. But for us to, to invest a huge quantity of time to put a policy on the table, I think right now would be somewhat...
Well, I'm not talking a big policy. I'm talking about like, you're gonna, you're gonna provide at least so many jobs worth so much, or, and/or, you know, I mean, just some basic numbers here that say, that's worthy of considering.
If you work in this environment every day to attract business here, you'll find out in two times, the second time when they all ask for the same thing, either play or you don't.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at this. It's getting late, right? This administration will continue to do what we have done. I think you have a real good idea of what our policy is. We will engage you as much as we can, as much time as you have on each one of these, sending out whether emails or whatever, but I'd really love your feedback on it. It really, it really helps us. Thank you.
I would just make a final comment by saying, I think last month's action of canceling one of the tax abatements was very important, because it does send the message, we're looking at those, and if you deviate from that, you are gonna pull the trigger and you lose what we, we said you would do, because you're not doing your, your job. And so that's very important, to stay on top of those going forward, too.
Well, Mrs. Rubidou is excellent at that. I wouldn't want my tax abatement reviewed under her, I can tell you.
Any other council members' comments? Come here.
Okay. Road paving, our two thousand nineteen, we'll start off here, weather permitting, very quickly. First, gonna start one hundred and sixty-first Street way out west from town into Bromley Way. That area's kind of been roughed up. We've got a map out there that puts us out by the Public Works on the travel Westfield. Our Public Works Department did a great job this year of applying for and receiving one of the state's million-dollar matching grants. That doesn't happen every year, but that money is becoming more and more competitively sought every year. I will also tell you that the state tax, the motor vehicle, MVH, amounts that we receive every year are beginning to decline. So going forward, road resurfacing is going to become more and more of a challenge on our overall budget in the years to come. School security, you know, our leadership at Westfield Police instigated a program this year that put, really created substations in all of our schools. You remember, we talked about all that. And in the last school year, August to May, they actually had over sixteen hundred self-directed school patrols and over three hundred police substation visits throughout the entire year, and that does not include the full-time school resource officers that, that are on, on duty in our school. So that program has been highly successful. I don't even want to talk about what it may have prevented, but they do intend you, intend to continue that program going forward. Been highly successful, and we also, today, we had a Chamber of Commerce golf outing, highly attended, out at Chatham. Chatham did a wonderful job in that course. We even had a person going around taking people to the port-alets. Thank you. That is some of the best work, Kurt, that I've seen you do. It was very, very effective. It was great. It was not a Chamber of Commerce day to begin. It was cold. It was windy, but it finished up just beautiful. Hope they made some money off of that. And lastly, something that I've been able to announce just a couple places, this one is, I'm just, I'm really proud to report this, and this is part of this community's dedication to the youth assistance program. And as all of you know by now, that program is designed to prevent, identify and prevent troubled youth from entering the legal system in Hamilton County. Started by our people right here in Westfield, full support of the council, has gone to every school district, going to the rest of the state. But I had an email from Judge Paul Felix late last week, who is our primary juvenile judge, now that Steve Nation retired, and his email was this. You know, we have a juvenile detention facility over in Noblesville, and it's been there, I don't know, twenty years, maybe. As of one day last week, the total population in the juvenile detention facility was zero. No kids were in juvenile facility. That's the effort of some programs the county has going on. It's, it's a result of the, of the prosecutor's office and the courts, but a huge part of that has been the success of the Hamilton County now Youth Assistance Program. So I think our council can be very proud of that fact, and I know I am. Thanks.
That's good to know, because tomorrow I have a meeting to fund some pilot programs around the state for youth assistance, so that's a nice statistic to be able to take in in the morning. So thank you very much. With that, I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.